Borninsky.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Evening.
The record reflect that Clerk Segras is in attendance and Snyderman.
I am here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the added item of G zero? Consider approving the purchase of seven Motorola radio kits and 12 Dell tablets.
So moved.
Or?
Made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item is the approval of minutes April 4th and 11th, 2023.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes as presented from April 4th, the meeting held on April 4th and April 11th, 2023.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All in favor say aye.
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 All oppose nay. Motion passes. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, let's see. Okay. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Oh, I'm, oh. Bills first.
Yeah.
Madam Supervisor, I move that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Okay, our next item is a public comment on agenda items only. This will be a three-minute timed public comment on agenda items only. And it's, it won't be a conversation. It's just one public comment, one way. And there's no yielding of time also, just to give everybody that information. So I'm sorry, we just have somebody, they're going to use the podium for public comment. Okay, so please go up to the podium and state your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Stidham. I'm counsel for J&amp;T Towing Incorporated. And I have a couple handouts here. I wanted to talk today a little bit about the... This is concerning the award of the police towing contract for today. A little bit of background. This initially came out in February, or was due in February 24th of 2022 as an RFP. It was, it was awarded initially on April, and placed on this body's April 12th agenda. And it was awarded to my client, J&amp;T Towing, along with two of the other companies in its family of towing companies by the name of Mayflower Towing and Nationwide Recovery Incorporated. Together, they submitted a joint venture. The joint venture bid, I've kind of summarized just the, initially what happened. That initial recommendation or award that was put forth on April 12th of 2022 was by the Police Department. Subsequently, today, there is a recommendation and an award for, to hire Westland Car Care. And Westland Car Care, and I guess that was moved by the supervisor. I have, and Mr. Bokhan, who's a legend here in the towing world, can hold this up. John, can you just go off a little quicker? This is simply a summary of the pricing. I wanted to give this body a summary of the pricing and the differences in pricing for each particular item between Westland Car Care and the J&amp;T, Mayflower, and Nationwide bid. As well, I wanted to just highlight some of the items that are extra benefits that are offered by J&amp;T that are not offered by Westland Car Care, such as all residents receiving three days of free storage, free for, free storage for crime rates victims vehicles, Canton location. You're only required to, the RFP requires you to be within three miles of the, of the city limits. But J&amp;T is located here in Canton. It has a yard in Canton in which it operates. And while we don't, Westland Car Care offers a little bit of discount, 10%, they say, on their toes.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, the three minutes are up. Thank you. We do have a public comment section at the end also. But we award three minutes for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has public comment? You state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Mark Delton. I'm an attorney in Rose Point Farms. I've been representing towing companies for 14 years. I'm here on agenda item G4. In 14 years, I've never seen a towing bid handled the way this procurement was handled. It's not even in the city of Detroit. I brought two folders with me here tonight. Folder number one is the proposal that your Police Department and your Financing Department recommended one year ago. Proposal, or folder number two is this township's procurement ordinance. There's, there's nothing in it. You don't have one. A township of this size, that's, that's a bit concerning. Now, there are policies that, that the township is supposed to follow. Those weren't followed for this bid. One year ago, the Police Department presented this proposal for your consideration. The Police Department recommended approval. The Finance Department recommended approval. Why? Well, when you look at the pricing, this proposal was $65 a tow. The supervisor's chosen vendor is $95 for the same tow. This proposal offers three days of free storage for township residents, $10 a day after that. The supervisor's chosen vendor is $15 a day with no free time for free storage. So after three days, under the supervisor's chosen vendor, township residents are going to pay $145, excuse me, 140, under the vendor that the Police Department and Finance recommended, they'd pay 65. That's more than double. The agenda packet for this item was interesting. Under Finance recommendation, it was blank. Where there would normally be a Director's recommendation, that was deleted. That's in every other agenda packet, agenda item in the packet for this meeting and for the past several meetings. That was deleted from, from this recommendation. So I guess, you know, before the board takes a vote on this, I'd, I'd ask you to ask just two questions. Why should the township residents pay double for the supervisor's chosen vendor? And what vendor does the department director recommend and why? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to make a comment? Please state your name, please, and your address.
How you doing? Louis Hussein with J.T. Crowe with Towing, 398-39-SUNBERRY-NORTHVILLE, if you need my address. But I'm here actually to ask the trustees to please delay this vote and take a good look at the bid that we put in. I provided a copy of it with the due diligence report that we provided to the attorney that... We've been through rigorous due diligence. The Police Department chose us. We've shown on every level, from evidence handling to eight-minute ETAs. On average, we tow for 18 different municipalities in Wayne County. 23 reference letters, including large private companies, including Hertz, Enterprise, Alte Equipment are all in that package for you guys to review. I just ask that you take a second look at it before you make your vote today. You were voted, you know, into this position to make decision, not to rubber stamp everything that comes in front of you. I just ask that you take a good look at it, give it some time, review it. The city, Westland Car Care, has had actually, in 2021, this is the second bid that they've lost. In 2021, they didn't, they didn't even bid. The award was given to Nationwide out of Ann Arbor. The Nationwide was denied towing because their price was too high. Here we are with a lower price, better quality, 80-plus trucks. We tow for all the municipalities pretty much around this area. We tow with the State Police on 275. And we've told your officers have dealt with us, whether it was with auto theft or with crashes on 275. We've interacted with your police departments. We know how things work, and we're going to be the best for the city. We just ask that you take a good look at it, take your time, and consider putting this vote on hold and find out what really happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Okay, I'm going to look online. Comments online. Let's see, for some reason, I don't know why. Okay, I'm looking online. If you want to comment, you can raise your hand. I'm looking for no comments. I don't see comments, no comments online. Okay, thank you.
May I take a point of privilege?
Sure.
Which we typically don't do because of, public comment is typically a one-way conversation. However, because an elected official was mentioned, it was indicated by one of the people who spoke at public comment that there was a supervisor's chosen vendor, and I think that that was inappropriate, and I think that that was out of line. And I just wanted to not have that sit out there and have you not speak to that. I wanted to do so on your behalf because a member of this body, in my opinion, was impugned a little bit during public comment. So I'm just taking privilege.
Thank you, Clerk Segras. It is an agenda item, and we will discuss it during that agenda item.
I plan on talking then, too.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a presentation by Wayne Metro. And actually, did you, you had this online, right? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Did you put it online?
Yes.
Forever? I don't see it online now. Oh, there we go. There we go. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Hiba Hidous. I'm the Community Engagement Outreach Manager at Wayne Metro Community Action Agency. So a little bit about Wayne Metro Community Action Agency. We were founded in 1971. We service the low-to-matter-income residents throughout Wayne County, and we address over 130 individual requests per year. We service all 43 municipalities and township. We have 75 programs and plus. And the five main types of services include water assistance, energy assistance, Head Start assistance, and property tax and income tax. We have over 21 sites and 14 Head Start locations throughout Wayne County. Our goal is to ensure the greater quality, healthier homes, and thriving communities. So our first line of contact is our Connect Center. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Our office hours are from 8:30 a.m. to 5:30, 5 o'clock p.m., Monday through Friday. What we did during the pandemic, when we all had to go home, we launched a universal application. We did not want to stop our services, and we wanted to make sure that we're still assessing and assisting all the residents that are in need. We launched our universal application, which was a one-stop-shop application that housed all of our programs within that one applications. Clients will create a username and a password, and they're able to apply for multiple services. The cool thing about this is they don't have to submit multiple documents and multiple forms. It's all in-housed in that application. So if a department, if they're applying for water, the department will take their water application, while another department can take those same documents and interim that they're getting into our property tax. Lots of our programs require minimum documents. We advocated lots during the pandemic because it was one of the biggest things, is the barrier of getting those, obtaining those documents. So we provide, so we ask documents, clients to provide IDs for 18 years or older, their current utility bills, such as their water bill or utility bill, their 30 days of income, and approved every SCR if the, if the, if the program is required by it. When they create a username and password, it allows the clients to know in real time the status of their application. As we're assessing many families throughout Wayne County, we still want to give that one-stop-shop where clients are allowed to see where they are in our queue, what documents are still needed from them, if their application is pending, or if it's approved. The first program that I want to discuss is our Water Residential Assistance Program Income-Based Plan. So this is referred to as RAPIBP. This is a two-year program that provides funding to eligible low-income residents to assist with water bills, water conservation, and self-sufficiency initiatives. This actually just went through a recent design change in this, through the Great Lakes Water Authority. So clients can get assistance up to $100 per month on their monthly credits, and they can get assistance up to $1,200 in their past arrears. It is a two-year program, and of course, it's a wraparound services where we have case management and resource referrals. Also, a home water audit and minor plumbing repairs up to $2,000, which I'll explain that in a little bit. Most of our program, programs go under a federal poverty level. This one is at a 200% federal poverty level. So for example, a family of four can be making up to $60,000 and qualify for these services. Household income is recommended, but it's not mandatory. Why we recommend that is just because we want to sustain those monthly bills and make sure that they're keeping up with those monthly bills. The, the person that is applying for services must be responsible for the water and have active services and current usage. If the bill is stating residence, occupant, or tenant, they just have to provide a complete lease for us that they're responsible for the water, and we can get them enrolled into that program. Here is our Water Residential Assistance flyer. As you can tell, that this flyer really says where we're assisting and what communities and what cities. Our flyers are actually really client-friendly, where they have access to the QR code, where it takes you straight to the application, and also provides a federal poverty chart of what the base of income must be for you to apply for these services. The Conservation Home Water Assessment Audit. So when we get those client bills, we assess. We take a look. If an individual is one person in the household, but we're realizing that their bill is about $300 a month, then there is an issue with their bill. There is either a minor plumbing repair that needs to be done, and it's not fair for the client that he has, they have to be paying that high of a bill each month. So our home water audit team, we put them on a schedule. We go out and we assess that home. We check for leaky faucets, broken toilets, water heaters, bathroom and kitchen faucets, drain pipes. We check for various things, and we'll cover up to $2,000 in those minor plumbing repairs when they get enrolled into this program. Our next water program is the Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program. Now, this is a little bit different than RAP, where the municipality has to be opted in for residents to get this benefits. The city of Canton has, a municipality is opted into this option. So clients have an option two for water as well. This pays past arrears only and not current charges, is up to $1,500. I want to mention that I'm speaking of two water programs. Clients can get the benefit of both programs in one, and that will be on our team to assess that for them. So our, also, exceptions may be granted over that cap. We submit it to the state, and we have been submitting over that 1,500. This is a low-income for households for water and wastewater bills. This was actually administered through the COVID funds. So restoration and discontinued services can be restored under this grant, and this is again assistance with both drinking water and wastewater sewer. The federal poverty level for this is at 150% federal poverty level. So a family of four can be making up to $39,750 to qualify for these services. Again, the water municipality must be opted in for residents to get this assistance. Past due is required because this is only a past due program. No household income is required, and IDs again are required for 18 years or older. And here is our flyer for the Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program. Our next program is the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund. So this is referred to as MIHAVE. This was established under the American Rescue Plan and designed to provide assistance with delinquent housing expenses to reduce foreclosures, loss of utilities, and dispayments of homeowners who experienced a COVID-19-related hardship on or after January of 21, 2020. So this is not our grant specifically, but we are helping administrate this plan, this grant. This is through the Michigan State of Housing Development Authority. And the benefits of that is that if you are a homeowner, you can receive up to $25,000 in homeowner assistance. So if you're past due in your mortgage, if you're past due in your property tax, past due in land contracts, past due in mobile home units, or even utility payments, they can get the assistance with this program. Tax Preparation Program. So we have, Wayne Metro offers free all-year-round tax preparation services for Wayne County residents and surrounding communities. So we help prepare unfilled taxes up to three years back. This, we have in-person and virtual options. The annual household income has to be around $60,000. And then there's an online self-preparation text that are available to individuals at any income level. And what the cool thing about this program is we can service anyone in the state of Michigan. So those were our programs. Next is our Regional Advisory Councils. So the Community Advisory Boards of Wayne Metro covers all Wayne County. So there are six regional advisory councils. What those are is basically those are trusted community voices that come to the table with Wayne Metro's boards and representatives. This is where RAC members comprise of one-third of Wayne Metro's Board of Directors. And what we ask out of those RAC members is basically coming into these meetings, which happen six times a year, and they are virtual, where they come to the table and tell us what the needs are, what their community needs, what their city needs, what they need from us, and we come to try to deliver. And this is something that we also work with them alongside to do the same thing. So if we have services and we need Canton residents enrolled into them, and we realize when we poll our data, we don't have many Canton residents that are being served, this is when we all come together. So the city of Canton is in Region 5, and we ask for somebody in this room that would help, or if somebody can be identified, to be on our RAC meetings. I also here go, shows the map of the regional advisory, and also what, what's, who is a RAC member and what they consist of as a RAC member. Wayne Metro is a designated continuum of care that leads, monitors, and provides technical assistance for six agencies, 19 programs, and 40 municipalities in Wayne County. So the COC is a coordinated community response to end homelessness. As we are the lead agency, we want to ensure that everybody has a place to stay. We actually recently just opened up our nighttime shelter in River Rouge. So this is, this was a big project for us, and we were really happy. We actually opened our doors last Monday. So this is our first respond. We are, we are working again, and we are asking the city of Canton if we can have firefighters, police officers, somebody that can step up on our board as well to making sure that if there is somebody on the streets, they know through our, they can go through our coordinated entry line and make sure that they have somewhere to stay. So we have some coordinated entry points. We have in-person locations. We have a location in Windot on 2121 Biddle Ave. We have our Christ Knott in Taylor, and we have access in Dearborn. If anyone is experiencing homelessness and they need to get into our coordinated entry line, they would call 734-284-6999 and press the option two. That concludes my presentation, and I thank you for having me here today.
Questions on the board? Steven?
Thanks for coming out and letting our residents know what's available. Seems like a great program. Just a couple of questions. What do the residents have to do to prove their income levels? Is it tax return or pay stubs or?
They're pay stubs. Pay stubs, we can also, if they're on social security, they can provide their reward letter. And if they don't physically have their income, they, they can declare a self-deck where we created it, where the client just allows us to know how much are they making on an average month. Some clients do not have income, but they have a family that's helping them. So we will all jot it down on our self-decks and get them enrolled to, in our programs.
Then, on the water side, when you go in and evaluate the home and see if there are any issues, is it upon the resident to obtain a vendor to come fix things? Or do you help them coordinate that? Or you'll do, you'll bring someone in?
Yep.
Oh, okay, that's great.
We have our actual home water audit team that comes out, assesses, and fixes those minor plumbing repairs.
Oh, they do it right then and there? Oh, that's great. Okay.
Yeah. So that's, and I actually left in the back podium just various of our flyers. Visit our website, www.wainmetro.org, and it really shows. I just spoke on very brief programs, but we have multiple programs that help with financial assistance, educational assistance, emergency assistance. So it's not just, so we have a wide range of services for Canton residents.
And Chief Baugh, does your team know about the new shelter that's opening up? Have you started using it or?
It's a good question because I was just reading an update, and we're looking for shelter for one of the residents that lost their homes as about 7 o'clock today. So I'm going to follow up with your agency now.
I'll leave my contact information, too.
They have to be of a certain income to utilize a shelter or?
So we have, I don't want to give misinformation, I'm sorry. But we, they have to go through our coordinated line. And when they go through our coordinated line, they will get access. Because let's say they have a family member that they can go to, they would be asking various of those questions to really see if they are homeless or not. So there's like multiple criterias that they have to check off. But we have a designated team and also a street outreach team that's out and assessing whoever is on those streets. And I'll leave my business card so you can contact me, and I'll connect you with the right department.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The police clinician will probably be in contact with you.
Perfect. Perfect.
I wanted to say thank you for what you do. This is really, really important information, so I appreciate your coming out tonight to, to give it to us. I was going to ask Chief Baugh to make sure that our police clinician knew about this, but he's already on that. I am wondering also, you had mentioned someone serving on the, the RAC. Did you want someone like us, like a board member like us? Or did you want someone who would be more like our police clinician or?
Whoever you guys can designate, just to spread the word for us and help us receive the word of what Canton needs. So if it's somebody from the board, that's absolutely fine, or from the trustees or any, from the police department, anyone that's a trusted voice in the community is, is more than welcome to be on our regional advisory councils.
Thank you so much.
And I will leave my information to get those contacts. And then again, I'll have those departments reach out. It's a very easy process.
Is it okay for us to share the, because I know we got the flyers electronically. Is it okay for us to share those on, on social media?
That's exactly what we want.
We actually have a page on our website for things like this. And I, so we do have your contact information. But Chief Chad, what about the CCIC? Is Wayne Metro part of that, or have they been before?
My history, at least going back off and on from '08, I don't recall Wayne Metro being in attendance at a CCIC meeting, or formerly called the Hate Crimes Coalition.
So that might be an avenue also. A lot of organizations that... A lot of organizations that want to participate, that's where we talk about what is available in the community and also give like a pulse of what's happening also.
Can I follow up with that?
You can follow up with me. It'd be, it'd be great.
Looks like we are gonna work together.
Any of our faith houses uh right now are uh contending with this, and they're the sub-systems that support homelessness in our town.
And you did mention it being on the website. So we're actually been going around to forty-three municipalities, and that's the thing that we really want is um, anyone that needs like water relief for like wat- their water bills, our contact information can be directed because we do have those funds, and we are able to assist. Um, so if something on our information can be on that website, that will be super helpful as well.
Well, Treasurer Slavens does refer people to you. So she runs Treasury and water billing. So she, she called me today just to let, you know, so I could let you know that. She does refer people if they're behind on their bills and they're, they're low income.
Perfect. Perfect. I appreciate your time. Thank you guys so much.
Else? No? Thank you. Okay, great. Let's see, get this back. Okay, there we go. Great. Okay, next item on the agenda are some resolutions. So let me head to the resolutions. First one is, consider adopting a resolution as a declaration of support of the Michigan Avenue Innovation Network project and a utility and infrastructure study of the Michigan Avenue Corridor to support planning, zoning, and land use decisions. No, it's actually written up as an RBA, isn't it? No, we can't, we can split them up. I don't have any preference.
Take one if you want.
Okay. Okay. So this one, can I, I guess I don't need a motion. Canton Township is leading a collaborative effort to reimagine the Michigan Avenue Corridor from the eastern boundary of the city of Dearborn through Ypsilanti. Collaboration will leverage the assets of each community to create a corridor that supports economic development through investment in public and private sector technological and mobility infrastructure. First activity of the main collaboration is to pursue a utility and infrastructure study of the Michigan Avenue Corridor. The study will be instrumental in pursuing future funding opportunities to implement technological improvements and mobility projects and programs. The current request of the Board of Trustees is to adopt a resolution as a declaration of support of the main, and the utility study demonstrates Canton Township's commitment to the Michigan Avenue Innovation Network. It is important to note that all the communities in the collaboration have agreed to pursue similar resolutions to support Main's efforts. Deputy Supervisor, do you have anything to add on this one?
Um, no, but I believe that, uh, just that I believe that uh there are a number of communities along uh Michigan Avenue that are considering uh similar resolutions, either in their township boards or their city councils, uh, in the coming weeks and months, uh, to support the Michigan Avenue Innovation Network project. And so um, it's pretty exciting to see uh communities come together regionally, um, and uh, um, it'll be exciting to see what comes of this.
Anyone else? Any questions? All right. Can I have a motion to approve?
Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the attached resolution.
Second?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Uh, Trustee Snyderman, do you want to read this next one? Um, this one is just a resolution.
Oh, I see. All right. I move we approve um the following resolution. Um, a resolution and appreciation of Canton 911 telecommunicators. Whereas the week of April nine fifteen twenty twenty-three has been designated National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas the number nine one one is universally recognized as being dedicated to report emergencies, whereas a telecommunicator responds to calls for help gives the citizens of Canton a quick response to emergency calls for fire, police, or emergency medical services, whereas the safety of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon actions of the telecommunicator and the highly, the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who contact nine one one. Whereas the telecommunicator serves as the first, first responder and the voice of help, providing direction and comfort for those who rely, for those in crisis to rely on when they call nine one one. Whereas nine one one telecommunicators play a critical role with their public safety partners above and beyond the normal call of duty. Now therefore be it resolved, the Canton Board of Trustees salutes all Michigan nine one one telecommunicators for the exceptional dedication and professionalism put forth in contributing to making Canton a safer place to live, work, and visit.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Resolution R three. Trustee Ganguly?
Um, I move to uh forward with the resolution to celebrate April as Arab-American Heritage Month in Canton Township. Whereas today, the Arab-American Institute estimates that there are roughly 3.7 million Arab-Americans living in the United States, and Michigan being the second-largest states in term of the Arab-American population, who are from a variety of faith backgrounds, including both Christians and Muslims, originating from any of the twenty-two Arabic-speaking countries have throughout their history in the United States, generously, generously shared their culture, music, and food with their fellow citizens. Whereas Arab-Americans have served in protection of the United States in every major confrontation and in all branches of the military, and from World War One and World War Two to the present day, as well as first responders throughout the United States and as public servants at various levels of government. Whereas Arab-Americans have faced discrimination, racism, and prejudice throughout their history in the United States, including after the tragic events of September eleven, two thousand and one, and it is important to recognize and address the harmful effect of such dis- discrimination. Whereas the state of Michigan, Arab-Americans have made important contribution to the auto industry and has played a pivotal role in the establishment of the industrial force that our state is known for today. Whereas the vast contribution of the Arab-American community in the fields of academia, business, medicine, science, and social justice continue to make our state a better place to live. And whereas National Arab-American Heritage Month was officially recognized by the United States Congress in April of two thousand and five to honor and celebrate the contribution of Arab-Americans to American society and culture, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton celebrates the contribution of Arab-Americans, the, celebrates the contributions that Arab-Americans have made to society, and does hereby declare April as Arab-American Heritage Month in Canton Township. We encourage our residents, employees, and the larger community to join us in the special observance.
Or?
Motion made by Trustee Ganguly, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Um, Trustee Berninski, you want to read R four?
Sure. Madam Supervisor, I move that we adopt the following resolution. Resolution declaring April as National Donate Life Month in Canton Township. Whereas each April Donate Life America, DLA, leads National Donate Life Month, NDLM, an observance focusing national attention on the need and importance of organ, eye, and tissue donation. Whereas National Donate Life Month features local and national activities to educate and encourage Americans to register as donors and consider living donation, as well as to celebrate those who have saved and healed lo- lives through the gift of donation. Whereas more than a hundred thousand people are waiting for life-saving organ transplants, including more than one thousand nine hundred children under the age of eighteen who are on the national transplant waiting list. Whereas through deceased giving, one donor can save up to eight lives with organ donation, restore eyesight to two people, and heal the lives of seventy-five people through tissue donation. Whereas living donation is not included in donor registration, and the hope is to keep increasing awareness about becoming a living donor to help patients in need, especially with kidney donation, as eighty-five percent of patients waiting are in need of a ki- kidney. Whereas the more than one hundred and seventy million people, more than one hundred and seventy people are registered, organ, eye, and tissue donor, donors. Now therefore be it resolved, the Canton Board of Trustees does hereby declare April twenty twenty-three as National Donate Life Month, and is thankful to all donors, donor families, registered donors, and champions of the donate life cause.
Support?
Motion made by Trustee Berninski, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. This one, of course, is also celebrating our two employees, Greg Holberger and Abe, who um, Greg did donate his kidney, and it's all over the news right now, so he really did a great thing with helping Abe, and Abe is doing well. So Abe's back at work, so that's really great.
Thank you, Greg.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C one, amend budget amendment for the award of a contract and purchase order to Cadillac Asphalt Incorporated for the twenty twenty-three Major Roads Asphalt Project for the twenty twenty-three Road Improvement Program. And then item C two, request budget amendments to the twenty twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the add-on G zero, consider approving the purchase of seven Motorola radio kits and twelve Dell tablets.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt um the following resolution, uh, move to waive the purchasing policy and approve the purchase of seven Motorola radio kits for twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents from Motorola Solutions and twelve tablets for nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents from CW, DW, and to amend the attached, uh, to amend the budget as attached.
Or?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The Clerk's Department has received funding through a Wayne County grant to implement technology improvements that will enhance the security of election processes and election workers. This project includes communication and monitoring enhancements such as radios allowing for direct communication between election staff at separate polling locations, radios to allow communications with the Public Safety Dispatch Center, tablets for secure communications and operations at polling locations, which allows for real-time communication and collaboration among workers during the planning and execution of polling activities. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add anything?
Just that, I, I'm extremely grateful to an emergency management coordinator, um, Will Hayes. He was able to um work with my office to secure some federal funds uh that we could bring into the community, to the tune of just under forty-five thousand dollars, which in the grand scheme of things from a municipal standpoint, isn't a substantial amount of money, but when it comes to a clerk's budget or an elections budget, is a substantial amount of money. So we'll have tablets, and we will have uh radios, which we, we tend to use both on Election Day, which was the intended purpose. We had submitted this grant, I think, three years ago. Um, but sometimes the wheels of approval turn slowly the further east you go, and so it took a while for that to get um through the process, and then when it came through, it came through quickly. Um, so we worked with finance to make sure um we had our quotes up to date and we're ready to go, and um, this will be super helpful. And what's awesome is that in the three years we were waiting for the approval, um, the election law changed, and so now we have early voting, and all of these items um will help facilitate early voting, and particularly the tablets um is an expense that I had budgeted that the board had approved, um, uh, in theory at least, or in concept, for twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four um for early voting. So this is money that we will be able to use that we were anticipating we were gonna have to take out of general fund. So it's a bonus for us.
Congratulations.
Um, I know, Madam Supervisor, you and I helped out on Election Day, and I think having witnessed that, uh, these are something that's very much needed and will be very helpful, so.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G one, consider awarding a contract for ADA improvements pursuant to the two thousand nineteen Capital Improvement Plan.
My support, uh, Trustee Berninski on that? I don't.
No, it was me.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a contract to AM Higley in the amount of totaling five hundred and fifteen thousand sixty dollars and seventy cents to complete Phase Two ADA improvements to township facilities, and further authorize the township supervisor or clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the Charter Township of Canton and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Two thousand nineteen, the Board of Trustees adopted a Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, and subsequently, the township issued capital improvement bonds to fund the CIP. The CIP includes ADA improvements throughout the township. Phase Two includes the following locations, Floden Park, Freedom Park, Cherry Hill School, Heritage Park, Historical Museum, Preservation Park, Sheldon School, Gun Range, River Rouge Trail, Griffin Park, Human Services Building, Administration Building, and Fessen Run. Staff is recommending award of contract to Township Contract to Construction Management Team AM Higley for Phase Two ADA improvements for five hundred and fifteen thousand sixty dollars and seventy cents, which includes a ten percent contingency. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, I have nothing else to add, but here to answer any questions, as so is John Sizlinas.
John, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Questions? Comments?
I just wanted to comment that. I just wanted to comment that um I wanted to thank John. He, you know, I had questions on whether we follow um responsible contracting policy, and he, and we definitely do for these projects, although they are, um, you know, we use our um outside vendor to go through these, and uh, once they come to us, we make sure that we, we use this process, and I, I, I think that's a great thing that we are doing. We are still doing this, uh, even though we are vetting these projects through our um, through the outside company that we use for all the projects.
Anya? Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G two, consider approval to purchase four Parks Utility Vehicles.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of four Parks Utility Vehicle Carryall five oh twos from Midwest Golf and Turf at two one 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 Hagerty Road, Commerce Township, Michigan, four eight three nine zero, for a total amount of forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents to be paid for from the subject account number for capital outlay machinery and equipment.
Or?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. On March ninth, twenty twenty-three, CLS staff advertised an invitation to bid for four Parks Utility Vehicles Carryall five oh two. As a result, four companies submitted a proposal with Midwest Golf and Turf proposing the lowest cost of forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars twenty-four cents total, that includes the required specs and necessary safety feature add-ons. Uh, that's it. Director Lefever, do you have anything to add on that one?
That these are uh replacement items for some very well-loved on utility carts by the park staff. Uh, each one of them are over twenty years old, so definitely well, well-do in time, so we're, we're looking forward to hopefully adding some new carts to the fleet.
Director Smith, do you have anything to add? I know the fleet is under your jurisdiction there.
No, nothing to add.
So um, I noticed that these were not the lowest bidder, but that um the lowest bidder actually didn't meet some of the specs that we needed, right? Some of the safety features, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, the, like you said, it wasn't the lowest bid, but the other bid included some of the add-on features that we were hoping to get, and um even for the small amount more than the lowest bid, uh, it still came in under budget, and we felt that it was more important to add these, these items with the new carts. So we're recommending the second lowest.
Thank you.
Else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G three, consider reappointment and new appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council.
Madam Supervisor, I move to reappoint Kathy Martin to the CDBG Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, and to appoint James Celewski to the CDBG Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire on April twenty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Support.
Made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Under CDBG bylaws, a confirmation of all Advisory Council members must be approved by a majority of the Board of Trustees. Kathy Martin's term expired on twelve thirty-one twenty-two. Mike Shepherd, employee liaison for CDBG, recommends Kathy's reappointment due to her expertise, experience, and excellent attendance. In addition, a new appointment is needed to fill a vacancy created by a In addition, a new appointment is needed to fill a vacancy created by a committee member not being able to continue their service. The interview committee has chosen James Sileski to fill this vacancy. The previous board member's term has expired, so James will start a new three-year term. Any questions from the board?
I'll just say that I'm always thankful for our community members that want to serve on our committees and commissions. It's a great service to the Canton Township community.
This particular board does a lot for the community. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider awarding towing contract to Westland Car Care Towing. Car Care Towing.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the proposal for towing services from Westland Car Care Towing for a three-year contract beginning May 1, 2023, with one three-year renewal option at the discretion of the township supervisor.
Support?
Made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The police department's current towing contract with Westland Car Care Towing is expiring soon, and the contract was put out to bid. Based on bid proposals received, we are recommending the board award a three-year contract with one three-year renewal option at the discretion of the township supervisor's office to Westland Car Care Towing. Deputy Supervisor Howard, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item we have is public comment, a three-minute public comment. I'm going to go online first. Okay, we have four panelists online. Is there any public comment? If you want to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Raise your hand electronically, and I can see you. Any public comment? Not seeing public comment, no public comment. Okay, thank you. Do we have public comment in the room? Three-minute public comment only.
Yes.
Okay, you can go to the podium. Let me state your name and where you live, please. Thank you.
Sam Hussein, J.T. Crowe. I just want to commend the Canton Township Police Department, Chief Bow and retired Deputy Chief Wilshire for conducting a fair and equitable process. They actually came, did a site inspection at our facility, did their due diligence, called all our references, and recommended us for an award. The process became corrupt when it landed at the supervisor's office. That's what happened here, and we're going to go ahead, and we're not going to stop. We're going to report this. This process is corrupt. I actually met you at a fundraiser, and what did you tell me? And I quote, "We're having a hard time with the award because he's been loyal to us." Does loyalty buy you a contract? Does politics buy you a contract? This process is flawed, and we're going to report this. Thank you for your time.
That is not true, and this board will not be bullied.
You're lying.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else in the room? All right, public comment's closed. Any other public comment? Mr. Miller?
I have addressed many times, and I'd like to know on Lily Road from Palmer Road going north, why that's not cleaned up. There was a guy mowing over there by the Speedway Gas Station, and he's for an apartment complex, the condominiums there, it's on the east side. He's not going to mow, he's going to hand you guys the bill or the county when he wrecks his lawn mowers. There's pieces of concrete where the road's been busted up for a year or more. Potholes have been patched, and it's never addressed. And the ditches out here continue to flood, and we've begged you for years, I have, for to do that. Now evidently, there's going to be a roundabout. You got the county, or you guys got money for roundabout, but you don't have money to clean the ditches out here. They haven't been cleaned since 1980, since I've been out here. Next thing is, that's dressed, the dump over there, many times. I want to know what's going on with Eagle. They seem to be the problem over there. They're not concerned about the drainage when they raised the dump over there, the first dump off Hanan Road on the west side, 50 foot. Now, one of the two, they're storing dirt over there, and the dump's closed, and I've been told by the state, once the dump's closed, that's it, not to disturb it unless it's leaking. And I'd like to know if that has a liner or test wells, and if they're being tested every three months. Next thing is, that's dressed, the trees over here. Trees or plants over here on Michigan Avenue, and some here down Canton Center Road, they're up in the power lines because they make the township beautiful. So we're supposed to, they haven't been trimmed. I want to know why they haven't been trimmed. So when there's a power shortage, a windstorm, ice storm, you lose power because of that, because they're up in the power lines. And it would've been a lot easier to plant tulips, so we don't freeze to death. Maybe we should come over there and flop on your couch when it powers out. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Louis Hussein, again, I just want to apologize on my brother's behalf. He gets a little passionate with these things, but hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to do some business with the city of Canton. We got a very big operation, and we're growing, and hopefully we'll grow this way one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Stidham again, on behalf of J.T. Crowe. I just want to remind this body that we did email everyone tonight a copy of a formal protest.
Anyone else? Any comments? Okay, great. Do we have any staff comments? John, anything coming up?
Yeah, we'd welcome everyone to come out to Art in Bloom this weekend, Saturday morning, out at the Arts Warehouse. Should be a great event. We've got all of our tenants and vendors set up for the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. We also are hosting our annual Spring Fling this weekend to celebrate mothers and parents with young ones, so come on out. They've got a couple dances set up for Saturday evening at the summit.
Yes, thank you.
There's a few community policing activities, which include the fishing derby thing, so Leisure Services. As we all know, we have the SG 5K coming up on May 7. Also, we're doing some Special Olympics work, where we shop with the cop at Dick's Sporting Goods, and of course, we have our Blue Mass on May 16 to St. John Newman. So just a little update for the board.
Thank you. Yes, and you're going to send out the, I think you're going to send that out, right? You put that in the update in terms of what the events are coming up?
Yes, I'll send the update by Thursday to Amy.
Okay, thank you. All right, board comments. We'll start with Tanya.
So a few of the board members went at the Michigan Township Conference last week, and we really got to hear a lot of interesting, we were part of, you know, we got to listen to many sessions there. One about, one was, I was very interested, was cybersecurity, and then there was also about the solar ordinance, and also the various grants that we can get. I think the most interesting one that I was part of was basically, you know, there's, the state is working on getting a big grant from, you know, from DC about having internet for all, fiber optics, building the infrastructure, which is, I think it's $46 billion from the federal level, and the state is right now applying for a grant, and we get the opportunity to apply for it next year. So I'm really looking forward, I have communicated this to our ITI Director Victor, and we're looking forward to seeing that we can really give broadband access to the whole community. So I think that was a good, a lot of good sessions at the Township Conference last week.
Thank you. Tanya, Kate?
So I also went to the conference, and it was quite interesting. Made some good contacts and did some good networking, and attended some interesting sessions. One that I thought was especially good was on board governance, so that was one that I liked. I also want to remind our residents that there's a freeze warning tonight, so if you have any tender vegetation that might be affected, you might want to cover it or bring it in.
I want to thank those of you that were able to attend the conference and bring great ideas back to Canton, and also didn't know about the freeze warning, but I was going to encourage people to go out and see all the beautiful Bradford pear trees, I think they're called, in our community that are flowering white right now. I think that's what they're called, and correct me if I'm wrong. And there's some roads that we've, over the years, sort of bordered them with those trees, and they look fantastic right now. Hopefully, they survive the frost tonight. And then lastly, on a personal note, I want to welcome home my dad, who was in the hospital for a lengthy stay, Ed Snyderman, and my mom, Elaine. I'm glad, she's glad to have him home, and I'm glad not to be going to the hospital every day to see him, so I appreciate everyone that reached out that knew about it, so thank you.
Tomorrow morning, I will be heading to Houston. I am presenting at the National Association of Election Officials' special workshop about retention and turnover in the field, but I will also be getting a tour tomorrow of Harris County Elections Division, which is the second-largest elections office in the country. They have 2.5 million registered voters. Michigan has 10 million registered voters, if you're trying to put that into kind of, you know, whatever, think about that. It's going to be a big operation, really exciting to see kind of what they do and how they do it. What's really cool is they administer early voting, and Texas has a pretty robust early voting law, so tomorrow, next year is our first time doing early voting, so I'll be taking some notes. And there's a lot of other segments about training, certification, education, the entire frame of the workshop is around the fact that there's a max acetus of election officials across the country. About 15% of election officials are estimated to retire in the next 12 months because they're not interested in doing another presidential election. And that comes with some challenges, so we're going to try to meet that as an organization. And then I'll just also take a kind of a point of privilege, and, you know, I read the letter that we received, and public comment was made today about a contract being awarded. And, you know, language is important, and it's important because the General Law Township Act, the Charter Township Act, and every case law I can find indicates that there is only one body that can award a contract in a township, and that is the Board of Trustees. And that until the Board of Trustees votes, a contract is not awarded. And I think it's important that people bidding on contracts know that, that the public understand that, that staff understand that, that we're all crystal clear in how we communicate with people. There's no, because as was eloquently said tonight, I am not involved in rubber stamping. You know, we don't have a lot of disagreement up here. It has happened in the past. When I served on school board, there was a lot more disagreement than we experience here, but it is not a rubber stamp, and we do push back, and sometimes we request items to be removed from agendas prior to a meeting. Not everything is done at the discretion of the supervisor. As much as I think the clerk is fantastic and should be all-powerful, or the supervisor is fantastic and should be all-powerful, or the police chief is fantastic and should be all-powerful, the corporation of Canton Township is the Board of Trustees. That is where the legal authority stems from, and I think it's important to acknowledge that. So I appreciate the work that you're doing, Supervisor Grant Hudek, and sorry, some things were said tonight. I understand this stuff gets heated, so I can appreciate that. But, you know, I don't, as somebody who's been attacked in a public meeting myself, I don't, I don't really like to leave it just hanging out there, so thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Clerk Seeger. And as you said, every member on this board has one vote. Nobody has any more votes than anyone else, or any more decision-making power than anyone else.
Want to wish the clerk a safe trip?
Yes.
And be interested to hear how that operation is, and I'm surprised to hear that Texas has early voting. I'm pleased to hear that Texas has early voting, so it's great.
First state to implement it in 1996.
Wow.
Believe it or not, early voting was a, it was a, it's very common in the South because it was predominant, it was created for rural voters. But Georgia has changed the game on early voting, and, phew, boy have they. 58% of Georgia voters in 2022 voted early, which is wild, but, you know. The things you keep in your head when you're a clerk.
Couple things. So I heard from public comment about Lily Road and Palmer. Anytime you find any drains or anything that need cleaning, you can call our DPW at any time and let them know where it is. We had a conversation just about that today. Also, anything you want to know about landfills, I've given out the information. Our office has information of the person to contact at EGLE. That's been given a couple times. You can also put things in writing. We also, if there's any potholes that you want to call, call 1-800-Road Crew. Also, because it's Earth Day, we wrote a resolution on that today. We, just to remind everybody that we are a Michigan Green Communities Gold Standard, which is the highest standard for greenery, so that's great. And while we are also talking, we're putting out educational videos on recycling because we know there are landfills in the last quarter of it, which looks like seven to 10 years left on that, so it's important that we recycle and compost. Another item is, we do have some fruit trees coming in through Leisure Services. They weren't here in time to plant for Earth Day, but they will be soon, so we'll be planting trees together.
And power line trees trimming, I think, is DTE's responsibility, isn't it?
Correct.
So DTE has a whole department that just monitors that and goes out and prunes the trees where needed.
Right. Right, so don't try to prune trees on your own, everybody out there. If you have any questions, as Trustee Snyderman said, please call DTE and stay safe out there. I appreciate that. All right, great. Can I have, anything else in the board? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.